All right, good evening and welcome. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held June 15th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. And if we could have our deputy clerk please take the role.
Councilmember Wildin?
Here.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Corot?
Here.
Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Hulse?
Here.
Mayor Alinsky?
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews is absent.
All right, thank you. Next, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge my business to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. And do we have any council members with anything to report? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say a big thank you to Parks and Rec, Jack Teal, Josh Frewen, and the many staff and volunteers that put on a very well-organized and fun run on Saturday. It was a lot of fun and a good return to racing after the year off and really, you can imagine the time that staff must have been up in the morning for a six o'clock restart, preparing, marking the course, and setting everything up. So I really just wanted to say thanks for a job well done.
Great, thank you. Any other council members? Yes, go ahead.
Briefly, I met with the soon-to-be owner of the Blazenham. They are going to continue their Mayberry family tradition, and it's always been a destination point and a great destination point here in Cottonwood. He's going to continue that and expand exponentially. They're going to have a wedding venue, they're going to have an amphitheater, this is all assuming we approve this, and a glamping area, and a farmer's market, and some other things, and it's just, it's just going to be first-class. So thanks to them.
Excellent, thank you. All right, any other council members? All right, Mr. Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple things first. Councilmember Henry, appreciate you showing up for the race. It was a great time. Feel bad for those people who went to the evening run. It was very hot, but by the time we got done, it was not too bad. So thank you for that. I also agree, staff did a great job, and a lot of work went into that. And then I wanted to thank Councilmember Narin for showing up. We had our employee recognition ceremony not too long ago. I almost, I was writing notes, I'm like, oh, there was something. Well, we get to recognize our employees, lots of years of service, had a great time, recognized our volunteers, and appreciated that. And then I was able to attend a volunteer appreciation event at PD today for their volunteers, and specifically for a couple that we're saying goodbye to, that they're leaving. So Ruth Flynn and Nancy Hodinger, also known to the community as the Granny Patrol. Chief Gazelle described the duo as "two of America's finest human beings." Our community is indebted to Ruth and Nancy not only for their selfless dedication to, but also the bright spirit they shared with all of us. It was a great ceremony, a great recognition of the Granny Squad and their commitment to the community. I met them on one of my early trips to Cottonwood. There was a group of white-haired little ladies sitting at a booth at Stromboli's with uniforms on. I had to go find out what was going on. So my wife and I went over there and introduced ourselves and met with them, and they made a very positive impact on my wife and I. So they're going to be missed, Chief, as you said, and hard to replace. Couple other items. The Bing Bags for Kids' Sake fundraiser is an event that supports Yabai, Big Brothers and Sisters. The event, the event will take place on Saturday, June 19th, at the Verdi Valley Fairgrounds, 800 East Cherry Street. It's a family fun day with a cornhole tournament and food trucks, plus vendors at the Resource Fair with United Way and Cottonwood Chamber. You can register to play the Bing Bags for Kids' Tournament at www.kbcornhole.com/azbiggs. Yeah. And then, I'm excited about this one. The Missoula Children's Theater starts next week, and registration closes tomorrow. We'll be doing the Emperor's new clothes, and currently have 28 kids registered. So as Councilmember Henry said, we're getting back to normal, and it's very, very exciting.
Awesome, great, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and comments are limited to a time in, excuse me, comments are limited to a three-minute time period. We have yellow forms in the back. If there's anyone that would like to fill out a form to address the council, you're more than welcome. We received two forms. First up, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, council and mayor, for allowing me to address you. I'd like to read something quickly, and you've already seen this. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cottonwood City Council by the authority granted to it by the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona and the people of Cottonwood, Arizona, do hereby commit to support and defend all the citizens' rights and liberties as guaranteed by the United States Constitution and Constitution as in law and the laws of the state of Arizona, by all lawful means, and irrespective of their political affiliations. Okay? This is obviously Resolution Number 3094. I go on, be it further resolved that the Cottonwood City Council hereby affirms its support of the Bill of Rights as set forth by Amendments 1 through 10 of the United States Constitution, and hereby declares that the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be a Bill of Rights sanctuary city, and as such, it shall not take or authorize any action or appropriate any public funds or other resources in violation of the rights secured to the citizens and residents of the city under the Bill of Rights. Now, I'm curious, we had a vote two weeks ago, and three of you voted negative to that twice. I'm finding myself, and I know you can't respond, but I've got to say this for the record, what part of this resolution could you possibly have objected to, irrespective of what your comments were? You know, Jesus Christ, whom I think probably everyone would say here was about as honest as anyone, said to the Pharisees in Matthew 12:37, "For by your words you shall be justified, and by your words you shall be condemned." I'd like to address this to you, Ms. Wildin. You voted twice now against the people whom you've been chosen by, not supporting the proposed Bill of Rights sanctuary resolution. You failed the first time to discuss why you voted against it. The second time, you somehow referred to women's suffrage, and I'm wondering, where does that come into this? And why is that an important matter? And then you went on to mention that you were threatened. I want to, I'd like to know who threatened you, because this small group that we have, and by the way, the Sixth Amendment requires they that are able to face their accuser. So we involved in this effort expressly instructed anyone associated with it to be courteous, well-mannered, and non-threatening. So it appears, and I know of no one associated with this effort who did any such thing. Further, I'm now convinced you are either a terrible storyteller or a liar. It further appears to me, based on your recent performance, you have proven yourself unfit for the office of the people you now hold.
Mr. Mitchell, your three minutes is up, sir.
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Nocito, you're up next.
Thank you, I too am. Michael Nocito is my name. I live in Verdi Village. I too am here about Resolution 3094. I want to point out that two counties in Nevada, Lander and Elko County, declared themselves sanctuary counties for the entire Bill of Rights just recently. So you may be trendsetters, just so you know that. I want to address the three of you as well. I know that Councilmember Wildin apologized to me on the way in, said, sometimes we have harsh things to say and we, we go on our business. I was curious about the comment you made from the dais regarding threat, being threatened. Most of the people that we're here are either married to or veterans of the United States service, and we served to keep, to allow you to be able to speak your mind, and I don't want you to ever feel like you're threatened. I accept your apology, and I want to encourage you to speak your mind. I want to go next to Councilmember Henry. And, and the three-minute issue here, we get three minutes to come up prior to a discussion and a vote. After the discussion and the vote, you have filibuster skills, you have the run-of-the-night, if you wish, you have the power of the media with you that quotes you verbatim sometimes with things that kind of not really truthful. An example was Mr. Nocito's bringing up the 670 petition signatures, many of which were not from Cottonwood. I was never told they had to be. When I initially came to the first council meeting in February, I asked if I had to be a resident of Cottonwood to fill out one of those cards, and I was told I was not, did not have to be, that Cottonwood was interested in the input from the outlying area, the sphere of influence of Cottonwood, because many of us that don't live in Cottonwood shop here, get our cars fixed here, worship here, recreate here, and basically contribute to the revenues input into the community. So if that wasn't the case, and I was allowed to speak, and I'm allowed to speak now, then I'm not sure why you made that statement that was printed in the newspaper, which caused me to have to go and write a letter to the editor calling you out on what you said. So be careful what you say, because half-trues, partial-trues, or a twist in something that is true, you were right. I had signatures from out, people were outside the area, but I was never told I couldn't. And when I submitted those 670 signatures, April 20th, I think, was the first time we visited that, no one, staff, no one said to me, oh, you know, you can't submit these, these aren't correct. Same thing with, on the first. So I guess I'm out of time, so I'll be back two weeks from now to talk to you.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Nocito?
Yes.
I won't be here in person in two weeks, but on the-
You get back for vacation.
Good deal, thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda? We move on then to the approval of the minutes, regular meeting of June 1st.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 1st, 2021.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Consent agenda, comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a three-minute time period per speaker, and the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So this evening, we have seven items on the consent agenda. I'll read them out loud. If there's a member of the public or a council member that wants an item pooled, please indicate so. Item one, liquor license application submitted by Ryan Anderson, owner and agent for 48 Wine Works, Inc., for a remote tasting room located at 816 North Main Street. Item two, council consent for the mayor to be absent from the city from, on, or about June 18th, 2021 until on or about July 9th, 2021. Item three is Resolution Number 3098 approving an intergovernmental agreement with Amingas Union High School District Number Four for the services of a full-time school resource officer to be provided by the Cottonwood Police Department. Item four, Resolution Number 3099, designating the city's financial services director as the city's chief fiscal officer for the purpose of submitting the fiscal year 2022 expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General. Item five, Resolution Number 3100, adopting a public safety personnel retirement system pension funding policy. Item six, proposed waiver of the city's purchasing policy for the sole source purchase of mobile crash barricades and portable bollards from Delta Scientific Corporation. And last, item seven, renewal of emergency dispatch agreements with the town of Jerome, Sedona Fire District, Verdi Valley Fire District, Verdi Valley Ambulance Company, and the Copper Canyon Medical and Fire District. Is there an item that a council member or member of the public would like to have pooled? If not, all motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, mayor, may the motion, Councilmember Henry, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's approved. And let's have our deputy clerk please read Resolutions Number 3098, 3099, and 3100 by title only.
Resolution Number 3098, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Amingas Union High School District Number Four for the services of a school resource officer to be provided by the Cottonwood Police Department. Resolution Number 3099, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, designating the chief fiscal officer for officially submitting the fiscal year 2022 expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General. And Resolution Number 3100, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, adopting a public safety personnel retirement system pension funding policy, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item one is discussion, consideration, and possible reinstatement of a revised fare schedule for the Cottonwood Area Transit and Verdi Shuttle Systems beginning July 1st, 2021.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm Rudy Rodriguez, I'm the deputy city manager for the city of Cottonwood. As you, as we've discussed in a previous session, we went through some hard times during the pandemic, at which point the city council decided to go ahead and do away with fare, fares on our transit systems, as well as the CAT's transit system, as well as the Verdi, it's now the Verdi Shuttle, previously the Link System. One of the reasons was, of course, the pandemic itself. The other reason was also that we had CARES funding that would funding the, fund the entire program, no matching funds for what we anticipated was two years. Unfortunately, it has only lasted one year. As a matter of fact, May was the, the end month that we were funded through the CARES Act. Since then, we, we've asked council, and we've talked to, had a public hearing a few weeks ago to talk to the public. You do have a meeting notes on there. We had Autumn over at the CAT system when she was with us at the meeting. We had only two individuals there, but we did have Apache, Yabai Apache Nation Transit was there, which we're so glad that they're back on board. We also had Robert from Sedona Transit, well, soon to be Verdi Valley, I keep forgetting, Verdi Shuttle, not the Link System. And we decided we were, we want to come to council and ask for fares to be reestablished. However, what we originally looked at was the fares that we had previous to the pandemic, and as we started looking through those fares, we decided to come back with some changes. I did email each and every one of you the changes that we were proposing. We're looking at reducing our fares from $1.25 to $1, and we're also making sure that when we go to do reductions for the seniors, veterans, low-income individuals, that we go ahead and make sure that they get 50% off. One of the reasons we decided to make the change and lower the fares from 1.25 to 1 was to make sure that we didn't have, to constantly be making change. Part of the, part of the issues we had that would delay our drivers was that we have, people come in with $2, and we had to stop to make change for them and such. We don't, we want to try to avoid that. Another reason for that is also to try to minimize the amount of money that's being handled, makes it a lot easier for us. And after learning some, a few things from, from the pandemic, we realized it's probably a lot safer for us to not use, not be issuing change. So with that being said, we still continue, we'll continue to do our, our half-price for seniors, veteran students, and low-income individuals. We will also continue to provide low transit service, area DA transit service to individuals, and we do also, once you have a fare on, on Verdi, on the Verdi Shuttle, you will also be able to get onto the other systems without having to pay any additional fares.
Great.
There. There's more information in here, the notes are inside your packet. The two rate schedules show in the comparison between the fares we had before and what we are proposing is also in your packet. And I'll go ahead and answer any questions.
All right, questions from council? No?
No, Mr. Rodriguez answered the questions. It seems like this would streamline the boarding payment process.
Thank you. And there's no significant impact, significant, there's an impact, but no significant impact to the general fund, correct?
We, we don't expect significant impact, because we, we're, we're hoping that the $1 fare make it easier for people to get on board and hopefully continue to increase our ridership. We're very close to being back where we were pre-pandemic.
Great, that's great news. All right, anything else? Go ahead, please.
I move to implement the revised fare schedule for the Cottonwood Area Transit and Verdi Shuttle Transit System, systems as proposed by staff effective July 1, 2021.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Wildin made the motion, and Vice Mayor seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Corot?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much, council.
Okay, item two is presentation, discussion, and possible approval of a proposed new salary schedule implementation plan resulting from the 2021 compensation study completed by public sector personnel consultants.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'm going to declare a conflict of interest and step down. We do have Kylie Tenbrook from Pierce Coleman here to answer any legal questions council may have, and I'll just step down and join the police substation over here.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Amanda Wilber, the HR director, and in addition to Kylie, we also have Kay Tilzer from PSPC who conducted the study for us, in case you have any questions specifically for her as well.
Great.
Okay, so tonight we are here to talk about the summary of the compensation study and its results. So back in December timeframe, council approved staff to move forward with a compensation study. Our selected consultant was public sector personnel consultants, which also goes by PSPC. They actually are the company that did our compensation study last time, too. So they're very familiar with Cottonwood, where we were, and they've been very easy to work with. From that point, once we selected a consultant, we went over the process with them, we selected various organizations that we wanted to collect data from, and then they worked on that for us, came up with some results, and now tonight we are here proposing an implementation plan for that. So this long list is a list of the organizations that we requested we get data from. We didn't get data from all of them necessarily, or some might be partial data based on the departments or positions that they have. Not all cities or organizations are the same, so they don't have always completely equal information to contribute. So in addition to salaries, we also looked at benefits, so we're going to start there. We looked at employer-paid insurance percentages. Right now, the city of Cottonwood covers 100% of employee-only medical coverage, which is, again, as you can see up here, what the majority of the respondents also do, and those who are not covering at 100% are not that far behind. For dependent coverages, the city currently covers 60% of employee-family coverage, 70% of employee-spouse coverage, and 80% of employee-children coverage. So that was kind of, in general, other organizations are covering between 50 and 80%. So we're right in the same ballpark with them as well. And then dental, the city covers the same percentages as we do for medical, so 100% employee-only, 80% children, 70% spouse, and 60% family. So dental in general came back between 80 and 100%, so we're pretty close there, too. And then vision in general was all over the board, between 0% and 100%. The city's currently at 0%. So there are other organizations also doing the same. So in general, on benefits, we're pretty close to market. We're doing what most other people are doing. We also asked for data on several other different benefits or programs. We don't have all of those programs, but we wanted to at least have data in case we wanted to implement that type of program in, in the future. We do get questions about some of these things, so we wanted to at least have the information so we could make informed decisions later. Some of that included on-call pay, tuition reimbursement, certification pay, things like that. So all of that data is in your packet as well. One thing that is not in the proposal to implement tonight that is important to still know is where we fall on vacation accrual. So we have several different categories there, non-exempt, exempt, and non-exempt fire, which the difference between non-exempt and non-exempt fire is that our fire department actually works a lot more hours than our regular staff, so they accrue at a higher rate, so that's the difference there. But across the board, we are below market in every single category for vacation accruals. So that's not in the proposal tonight, but we will be bringing back proposed leave policy changes soon to council, and that will be incorporated into that proposal. So what we did, when we got our data back, PSPC combined, or came up with the average market midpoint for each position, and then compared the market midpoint to the city's midpoint for each position. From that point, they paired it with the closest range structure, or closest range within the new structure that we're proposing. And then this last column over here on our chart is the variance. So it's basically the percent difference between what the market says we should be at and where we really are. So this is just a small snapshot of an example, basically. So we had things, positions come back all across the board. So you can see we have a couple that are very far below market. I think this one might have been our worst one, at almost 30% below market, but we have some that came back a little bit above market, we have some that are right around market. So this is just a snapshot, we really had things kind of all across the board there. So part of our proposal tonight is that we eliminate our old range structure and implement a new range structure. So our current range structure has a spread of 75% between the minimum and maximum per position, or per range, sorry. And then, then it's 5% between each range as you go down each category there. One of the problems with our current range structure is it's such a broad spread that the very first part of our ranges aren't even really usable because they're so far below market, so it's, it's not very competitive. So we end up not using that, which really narrows down our hiring range. So the new proposal is going to be only a 50% spread, so we would plan to use our entire range and not have anything that's kind of cut off, and then we would still propose to keep 5% between each range. So we came up with proposed ranges for positions by looking at a few things. First, the market study results, of course. We want to know what the other positions in the market are coming back at, but then we also wanted to make sure that our positions, as they relate to each other, continue to make sense, because we do have a lot of positions that are like level one, two, three, that kind of fit together like that. And then we also looked- And then we also looked cross-departmentally, because we do have positions in different departments that have similar levels of responsibilities. And like I mentioned earlier, not every city and town are the same, they don't always have the same departments or the same responsibilities. So we took all three of those things into consideration when we were working with the consultant to come up with the final proposed ranges. So tonight, if council moves forward with the proposed implementation plan, this is a summary of what we would expect. So we would have a new range structure, each position would have a changed range because the old structure and the new structure don't translate equally, so all of our positions would have a new range. We did have a few title changes, just to make sure that we were being consistent with what we find in the market as well. Our salaries would be increased to at least the minimum of the new range. We don't want any employee to be paid below what the market says they should be minimally paid at. And then we are also proposing a minimum of 4% increase per employee. This isn't necessarily part of the compensation plan recommendation from the consultant, per se, it doesn't really have anything to do with the market in general. But as you know from our budget presentations, we don't have merit in the budget, we don't have COLA in the budget, and this would kind of be in place of those things. And now would be a good time to implement that with the compensation study changes as well. So the plan for the 4% would be, it would actually be applied to base salaries unless someone is at or above maximum. We don't want employees to be above maximum other range, so that would be a lump sum payment this year, and then in future years, that would be decided later. So that's not something that would be set for years to come. I did want to pull out the contract positions for council as the contract positions report directly to council. Right now, in the proposed implementation plan, they are included, but if council desires otherwise, of course, you can give staff direction to do whatever you want in regards to the contract positions. But this is a good summary of the 4% and how we envision this working as well, because you have direct reports that fall into each of those categories. So again, increase to the base or lump sum payment, or if there are employees who that 4%, in that 4% hit their maximum, we would still cap them at their maximum, and then whatever the difference would be, would just be a lump sum payment. So that's just a summary of the contract positions specifically for you. Obviously, tonight we are presenting to council, but if council approves the proposed changes, they would be implemented on June 20th, which is the start of the pay period that gets paid first in the new fiscal year. So employees would see that on their first paycheck in July, which is July 9. And then finally, we have the implementation costs. So we have this broken down by fund for you and how it affects each fund. So overall, the total for fiscal year '22 would be about $741,000. That is broken down by some one-time costs and reoccurring costs. So our one-time cost is basically the lump sum amounts, if they were issued, that would only be this fiscal year, but anything added to the base salary would become a reoccurring cost. And then the general fund for this year would be about $545,000. Transit is about $41,000, and of course, that's partially funded by ADOT in transit budget. Herf funds are about $15,000, water is almost $100,000, and wastewater is $63,000. So I did want to point out, water and wastewater seems kind of high for the number of employees that they have compared to the general fund, but those were the positions that were most out of market, too, so that number looks a little bit larger. So with that, oh, and also, these dollar amounts are included in the tentative budget that you'll see tonight, so it is part of the balanced budget that is being brought to you later. And with that, does council have any questions for either myself, or Kay, or Kylie?
Counsel, any questions for, for anyone? No questions, no surprises here? No? Okay. Do we have any questions for Ms. Tenbrook or any of the team from the, from the consultants? No? Okay. I know this is part of our discussion during the budget process, and certainly our negotiations with our contract employees, we discussed this as well, so I'm pleased that we can get our employees up to market, I think, especially considering some that were so far below market, and I hope that can help with our recruitment efforts.
Me, too.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed implementation plan resulting from the 2021 compensation study as recommended by staff.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Narin made the motion, Councilmember Carratt seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Okay, very good, thank you. Next up is waiver, item three, waiver of procurement policy and authorization to purchase arsenic removal equipment and materials on a sole source basis from Ad Edge Technologies LLC for new arsenic treatment system at well 89 for an amount not to exceed $920,000.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Tom Whitmer, utilities director. The agenda item you have before you is to request your approval to allow us to purchase a brand-new arsenic system for one of our, or two of our primary well sites in the city's water distribution system, which is wells 8 and 9. As some of you may be aware, when we purchased the six water systems that currently are owned by the city back in 2005, shortly after we purchased them, the EPA came along and actually reduced the limits on arsenic that would be allowable in drinking water from 50 parts per billion down to 10. With the exception of two or three of our wells, all of our wells exceed the new limit of 10 parts per billion, which required us to install arsenic treatment systems at all but about three of our water, our well sites within the city. Those systems now have been in place since 2006, some we put in a little bit later, and they have, some of them are feeling the life. They're not up to their standards with their performance at this point in time, and over the last year and a half, two years, actually three years, we've had some real issues with some of our systems in maintaining that 10-part-per-billion level that is required by the EPA and Arizona's partner in quality. As some of you are aware, in fact, all of you should be aware, we recently purchased three systems. All three are installed, two are already back in the system, and our last two water quality samples from them were at 1.5 parts per billion, which is where we expected them to be. We've been pulling samples regularly, and they're pretty much all between non-detect and two. So we're very pleased with what we're seeing at this point in time from those systems. The third one will be back online starting next Monday, and we're expecting the same thing because some of our preliminary results have come in at the same levels. This is for two of our primary wells within our distribution system, the wells 8 and 9, and we've been having some significant issues with wells 8 and 9 over the last year and a half, primarily just trying to maintain that 10-part-per-billion level. We've gone through virtually everything we can possibly do with regards to try and identify why, what the problem is, we've changed out the media in it. We've had the manufacturer of that system out here no less than three or four times to look at it, and they are scratching their heads and walking away, not really knowing what to do at this point in time, other than to sell us a new system. If you recall, the three systems that we purchased recently were of that edge, and the reason we went with them is because they've got a new technology in the form of the media that they use. They have exclusive rights to that media, and with everything we've looked at and investigated, not only with just our searches on the internet, but also talking with other municipalities, this seems to be the way to go. It's much less labor-intensive, and it seems to work a whole lot better than, than the other systems where we're constantly having to regenerate and everything else. So given the problems we've been having with wells 8 and 9, we started going, we went back to Ad Edge and said, put together a proposal for us. And this, the proposal, or the proposal you see before you is the proposal they submitted to us. The cost there, I expect it to be much less than that, because there's a component in there that we haven't had to use at any of the other sites thus far, and that's pH control. That adds an additional $70,000 or $80,000 to the cost. We wanted to put it in there just to make sure. We'll start out without it, and if we're not able to maintain our arsenic levels at the, at the level we need to maintain them at, then we'll go ahead and add it on. But we wanted to bring it back to you just one time rather than have to come back here later and say, okay, help us out here. So with that, be happy to address any questions you might have.
All right, questions, Mr. Whitmer? Comments?
Mr. Whitmer, where is 8 and 9 located?
Just south of the airport, there.
Okay. All right. All right, well, you know, it's an expensive fix, obviously it's an expensive system to run, but we can't.
If I may, one of the things we anticipate doing with this is, we've got 24 vessels there, 48-inch vessels there, we're replacing them with two 96-inch vessels. The 24-inch vessels, we can use it some of our smaller sites when we start having issues with them, we could actually just go ahead, incorporate them into this, into the, those systems, and put the new media in them, and they'll, should save us a significant amount of money.
Okay. All right. Yeah, again, I know we've been having issues with those two wells, and we can't gamble with, we don't want to send out any, any anastograms in the mail to folks about the arsenic levels.
We have one more going out here, and that's for one that we just replaced, because what they do is they, you have to do it on a running average, running quarterly average. And even with the 1.5 parts per billion, we were still at 10.6, which would cause us to have to go up for one more violation on that one well, such the Yuma Cactus well.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion then, that we, excuse me. We waive the city's procurement policy and authorize the purchase of arsenic removal equipment and materials from Ad Edge Water Technologies for well 89 on a sole source basis for an amount not to exceed $920,000, subject to the city's standard purchase order terms and conditions.
Second.
All right, Mayor, may the motion, Councilmember Wildin seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
All right, thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next is adopting the city's fiscal year 2022 tentative budget and establishing an expenditure limitation.
Evening.
So if I can jump ahead of our deputy city manager, we gotta take a moment of silence for Kirsten, no, I'm kidding. They canceled her flight, so she had to leave town planned, sorta, but for a sad reason, was hoping to be back today, so, but to no fault of her own, they canceled her flight, and so she'll be back as soon as we can, but luckily Rudy has done this a time or two, and so Rudy will guide us through the next couple of agenda items. Thank you, Rudy.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Mayor and council. Today, we're here to approve the tentative budget for fiscal year '22, but before we can do that, we have to open it up to the public, take comments before we actually go in there. So Mayor, if you wouldn't mind opening the floor.
Yes, sir, I'll open the floor for this public hearing regarding the budget, and if there's any members of the community out there that would like to comment, it looks like it's all staff and our reporter, so just see all the forms in the back, and here we are.
If it is okay, though, Mayor, Mr. Rodriguez, can you, we have some significant changes from the budget that was presented previously to tonight's budget. Are you able to just take just a few minutes in order to have a true hearing and highlight some of those very significant changes, please?
They're included in the tentative itself. If you want me to, I'll go ahead and extract them from there.
This is a public hearing, and I think the public, we should have it on the record for the public, thank you.
Mayor and council, there was the changes, so you know, the upcoming budget is $120,000, excuse me, $120,593,060. We should get off so cheap, but we don't. This is about 40, almost $45 million higher than our 2021 budget. There are some highlights on here, and I'll go ahead and go through them. From our proposed alternative, the changes are $22,92,890. Those include, starting off with the unfunded liability, as you know, we went ahead and floated pension obligation bonds for the city of Cottonwood for its PSPRS program. We are expecting to pay it out on June 30th. As a precaution, we actually budgeted the $20 million on, in both years, both fiscal year '21 as well as '22. That's one of the largest increases due, from the proposed to the tentative. Other items are that were changed, whereas the AWAS over at the airport, that particular grant-funded project, we rolled it over into fiscal year 2022 due to timing issues and being able to acquire the, the equipment, and also getting the authorization from ADOT to go ahead and proceed. That's approximately $450,000. The CDBG program that we have for the kids park, their kid playground apparatus was also rolled over into next year due to timing, that's about $450,000, excuse me, that was $243,000. And also, one of the things that came up during, recently was the CDBG homeless program, $1.75 million. Along with that, the library also carried over some grant funding for the sidewalk program, about $50,000. Transit project had, Transit had two projects going on, one of them was a canopy over at the Transit facility, and the other one was two bus stops that we're going to go ahead and roll over into next year, totally $225,000. And then another, there was a couple of employee benefits adjustments that were made that were fairly minor. Those, that makes up the bulk of the changes from the tentative, from the, from the proposed to the tentative. Thank you.
And Mayor, just one follow-up question. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I've been getting several questions about how the city plans to spend the rescue project funds that will be allotted, and I clearly have the information in my packet, but do you mind just taking a moment to touch on what that process looks like as we determine what projects to allot the funds to, please?
Mr., may I, may I take that one, Mr. Rodriguez? So a couple federal grant, or programs, so the CARES replacement, which we use to pay the salaries of public safety, we, you guys directed us, set it aside, we set it aside. That is currently budgeted in grants, so that money is just sitting there. That is money that we talked about last week, using for housing, so the housing study and possibly down payment assistance program, which I believe the one position is later this afternoon, or later this meeting we're going to talk about, but it's there for council's discretion. Current recommendation is housing. I know there's other items that we could use that for, at council's discretion as we move through the year, but it is set aside, not budgeted to be spent, but it is budgeted to be able to spend, it's not part of the reserves. Then the other part is the rescue plan, which I believe will end up being 2.4, 1.4 this year.
Two-year successive, probably 2.8 million.
2.8 million. It can be used for a limited amount of things, and council has not, I haven't brought anything to council, council hasn't made any decision, but just currently, I haven't talked to anybody, so I don't want to scare anybody, but we are working on updating, fixing, Tom left already, our wastewater treatment plant at Mingus. So it's 30 years old, hasn't been taken offline, can't be taken offline. We have some major blower problems, we have issues with that plant that need to be addressed. The proposal that we are working, bringing back to council in the next month or so is, no, we were not bringing the proposal back, we're working on the proposal, but the first round of numbers is about 3.2, and we don't believe it was all-inclusive. Our estimate that the fix for Mingus will be about $5 to $7 million to fix it. So my current thought process that I plan to bring back to council, once we get this all done, is to use it for wastewater. A couple reasons that works, one is it's based on population, and all of our, our wastewater facility One is it's based on population, and all of our wastewater facility serves residents. We currently don't serve anybody with sewer outside the city limits, so it kind of matches how the funding was allocated, which is based on population. It also helps, keeps rates down, so in the future, it helps, it's money we don't have to raise rates to cover, to fix that. And it's always an option, but it's not a very good option not to fix it. It's been 30 years, and it needs a little bit of work. So, I plan to bring that back to council for a decision later on. Hopefully, we can get the number less than 3.2, but we're guessing closer to 5 for a final number to fix Mingus. The 2.8 would make a significant dent in that needed infrastructure. And based on the information we've received from the feds, it's a usable reason. I did learn that the county plans on offering grants with their monies for infrastructure, so that, according to a couple sources, they'll be announcing that in the next four to six weeks on what that'll look like, what it'll, who and what'll be eligible, what kind of programming. So, it's another way possibly the city of Cottonwood might be able to get some more additional funding for infrastructure. And when we say infrastructure under this bill, it's a very specific, it's not roads or staff or anything like that, it's wastewater, water.
Broadband.
And broadband. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, does that help there?
That's very helpful. Thanks, City Manager.
Okay. All right. In hearing nothing from the public, we'll go ahead and close the floor and move on to the next item, which is adopting the city's fiscal year 2022 tentative budget and establishing an expenditure limitation. So, take it away, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick explanation about the expenditure limitation. The expenditure limitation basically sends up, sets up our upper limit. We can, at any point, council does any budgetary revisions, they can come down, but we cannot exceed that upper limit. And as I mentioned earlier, that is $120,593,060. And again, that's almost $45 million bigger than the fiscal year 21 budget. Would you like me to go through the listing again?
Okay.
Some of the things that are on air is we're looking at seven full-time employees, effective July 1st, permit specialist, maintenance technician for streets, two police officers that are currently not unfunded, however, they do have the authority to go ahead and add them on as they go. As you know, we don't always have a fully staff, so any staff that is not fully staff will go ahead and incur savings, which we hope will pay for these two officers down the road. We also have two police aides and an additional utility GIS technician, too. There's also four reclassifications. Our street superintendent to public works manager, the assistant to city manager to executive assistant, our planner to a senior planner, and then our electrical technician to an electrician. Just other mentions of things having to do with salaries for employees, the mayor program is not funded. Obviously, we are going to do a compensation study, but it will be evaluated for future years. There's no COLA included either for that same reason, but there, one had mentioned that health insurance did increase by 6% this year, dental also increased by 3%. And we continue to help our employees by providing some sort of support for those two programs. There are some changes to retirement adjustments. Currently, our ASRS went from 12.22% to 12.160%. There was a typo in the council communication. Also, it's not Spears fire, it's actually PSPRS fire. For some reason, I guess the spell check picked it up incorrectly, but that went from 27.10% to 33.55%, and our PSPRS police went from 58.39% to 68.12. We expect those numbers to come down drastically once we go ahead and fully fund the program. One of the things that council has asked our financial services directive to do is to increase our reserves. We have been real fortunate that even though we were very conservative last year as a precaution, we were very successful in continuing to increase our revenues. Our campaigns that we have put out there to ensure that the public, ensure the public that we were a safe place to come visit has paid off for us. We are increasing our reserves from 16.65%, which is two months' coverage, to three months' coverage being 25%, and that'll bring in, that'll raise our level from about $3 million to $5.7 million into our general fund reserves. Our capital accumulation fund, previous councils as well as this council has always asked us to maintain it at $1 million. We have $1.5 million available. $500,000 will go to acquire a ladder truck, so we will still maintain that $1 million for this upcoming year. Our undesignated reserves are set at $4.8 million. Our capital replacement fund, which is a fund that we've set, a new fund for this coming year, and for future years, we're sending side money so that we can replace equipment that becomes as an emergency issue. Take, for example, if we have computer, which we've had this year, we've had too many computers that have gone out, and we don't have the budget authority, we'd be able to tap into this. This will compound from year to year. So, this year, we're planning to set aside $634,000. Next year, whatever that number will be added to this and continue to grow from year to year. Hopefully, at some point, we'll get to a point where we'll be able to apply major equipment cash without having to borrow money. And then, of course, the general fund reserves that you require us to maintain is at $446,000. Totally, total amount of reserves for this upcoming year set aside are $12,717,190. So, we're in relatively, relatively good shape. Also, that was previously mentioned, besides the reserves, we have $750,000 set aside for the, to fund the compensation study this upcoming year. And this is probably one of the largest years, capital outlay years that we've had for some time, and that is, we have capital equipments funded, I expect it to be funded at $7.6 million, and we have capital projects at $17 million totaling $24,943,500. That's, we funded just about everything that was requested for this upcoming year, and we're really proud of that. Included in there, of course, as we just mentioned, there's $1.4 million on for the American Rescue Plan, which we've got, are setting aside also in the grants fund, still to be decided. And as we mentioned, that was, that's kind of restricted to wastewater broadband projects. With that being said, in your packet, you have the official state forms that will have to be submitted to you, as you may or may not know. We have to submit some state forms at the tentative level and also at our final approval level to see how this transitions from one to the other. Traditionally, we've had very little changes from one to the other, but we still have to post those on our city website. And we have two different budgets on here. One of them is a detailed budget showing every single account number and as well as what the department estimates and what is proposed for next year. And then, we also have a draft tentative budget, which is what we propose. It also has a lot of narrative, that explains a lot of things, has a lot of graphs in it. That will eventually be converted into the GFOA budget, which will be submitted to GFOA for another award. With that being said, Council, I'll be happy to try to answer as many questions as I can. If not, I'll just refer them over to the city.
Mr. Mayor, I actually already have one change. I'm glad Kirsten's not here. So, we opened up the bids for Mingus, finishing off Mingus Street today. Just so council's aware, they came in higher than budgeted. We don't have final numbers yet, but it's a, it's a significant number, so we can handle it, we'll be good. So, Kirsten will figure out where to, you know, how to move those numbers, or we'll just handle it in the next year. But I just wanted to counsel know, one of the reasons we have reserves, the cost of labor continues to rise, the cost of materials continues to rise, so I'm a little concerned, not about our budget, we got that, but it was a little bit of a shock. The low bid was 2.7, and the high bid was 4. something, 4.6, I want to say it was pretty significant. We budgeted 2 for that project. So, again, our public works manager's still got to go through all the numbers and, you know, check everything out and probably find somewhere to reduce the numbers a little bit, but just to make council aware, so you're not shocked later on when we come back or when we actually get busy on that street.
Just as a side note, we have, we have some of that money set aside from the bonding back in 2015, so though that's not a consolation, because costs are high, it's still, we have some of that money already set aside.
Okay. All right. Council, do you have any other questions about the budget?
How about, this is a futuristic question, but how about the reserves, do you, I guess, guesstimate in the future, past '22? Will we be able to continue, or what's your best guess?
All I can say is Kirsten is very good at setting money aside, and she's very good at saying no to staff. So, I'm almost certain that wherever possible, we will go ahead and set as much money as we possibly can. We will always follow council's directives, and she's always been a very strong proponent of making sure that we try to put together as much cash as we possible can. So, I suspect that if things continue as good as they are, we will continue to add to our reserves. I will caution you that at some point, you don't want to get past a certain amount of reserves, but it will allow us to continue doing big projects, like the $24 million we're putting out this year for capital projects and programs. Again, we're real proud of that.
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wildin, we'll continue to budget 25% restricted. So, that's the new number set by council. So, our new restricted, which means we don't dip into that, that is set aside for emergencies like a pandemic. That will now be at 25% until council directs us otherwise. The undesignated reserves will vary from year to year. I can tell you that staff is beginning to think about future years. So, we have street issues that need to be addressed, Main Street to start, there's a lot of others that will take money, and, you know, we had, we ended up borrowing money to do some of Mingus. We borrowed some of that money, so we're setting that money aside to begin to pay cash for those kinds of projects as, you know, supplement grants. So, we also have a Parks Master Plan that calls for soccer fields and some other big things for the community. So, there are other things that if the reserves continue to, revenue continues to grow, continues to be, even if it is what it is today, I think we'll be able to do some things for the community in the future years, but that'll be 100% up to council as we move forward.
And I just want to thank council, too, for really holding the line on bolstering our reserves. It's, it's good to see that we're at 25%. The 90-day reserve is excellent. And I do worry, you know, what the years hold for us. I was here in the fat times years ago, and then, you know, the recession. It was nice to know we had reserves then, you know, to make it through that. So, I hope we continue to hold the line and make sure that we're well-positioned to, you know, weather another downturn. Anything else from council? I'll say one other thing. The, our, our public safety has long had a list of wants and needs, in fact, and so many years, we've had to just say, sorry. But this year, Fire and PD both, I think, maybe didn't get absolutely everything he asked for, but pretty darn close, and that's, that's just amazing. So, I'm really, really proud of that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, everything for, for our police department, everything but a robot, I think it was, and they asked again, and we declined again this year, but we'll, we'll look at it next year. The radios, we've, everything that both IT and PD has asked for to fix our radio issues is in the budget. In their line items, we've increased their, their programming, you know, equipment replacement, whether it be the long arms or their, whatever it is that they need to be safe is included in this year's budget. We're very, very fortunate, and, and again, this is not me brown-nosing, these decisions were made before I got here. You know, the increasing half-cent sales tax has made a difference. You know, we made some questionable decisions early on in the pandemic about marketing and advertising and doing different things, and we continue to find balance, and it's really paid off for our budget. And I think that under council's direction, we didn't spend at full capacity. I mean, we, that's not what our goal was. Our goal was to add positions in the places we needed them, that's what we did. We funded things that have been put on hold for years. A couple of those tractors are duct taped and good luck, you know, operating that we've been able to do, and we're paying cash for most of those. We are leasing some of the vehicles that need to be replaced, but that's been our plan from, since before I got here, Rudy and Kirsten started that program, but the tractors, the ladder truck, and those kinds of things, we're, we're paying cash for, which is exactly what I think council wants us to do, and we are very, very fortunate.
And it's nice to be able to pay cash for some of these big-ticket items, and I agree with what the mayor said. This budget, in my opinion, addresses a lot of our critical needs and priorities in a fiscally sound manner, and in, I think it's fairly spread among different departments and different needs. And I know Kirsten and Helen aren't here tonight, but I just wanted to let them know they did a lot of work, especially when we have so many changes. And thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, again, for humoring me earlier. We had so many significant changes between our first review of the budget and then tonight, and they were working hard to bring us back a balanced budget, so I appreciate that.
All right. Council, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. See if I can find it. I move to adopt the city's proposed fiscal year 2022 tentative budget as presented and to establish the city's fiscal year 2022 tentative expenditure limitation at $120,593,060.
Second.
All right, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Corot seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Corot?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Halls?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
All right. Thank you, council. Good work.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Ron, thank you. All right, next is Resolution Number 3101, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Sedona for joint funding of a Verde Valley housing manager.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Ryan Bigelow, the library director, and tonight I'll be acting as the housing coordinator, not, definitely not the housing expert, not the housing expert. We're here tonight for the approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Sedona for a full-time housing manager position. At last week's work session, council saw two presentations. The first on the Verde Valley Housing Assessment by Mary Shaquin of the Verde Valley Regional Economic Organization, and the second on some programs, homebuyer assistance programs by Devon and McLaughlin from the Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona. And so, what that did is that painted us a picture of some of the challenges that our area is facing, but also some of the opportunities that we have to move forward. So, clearly, making a dent in this housing shortage is going to have to be a multi-pronged approach, and one of the suggestions from the assessment is to invest in staffing. So, what we're proposing tonight is a shared position with Sedona. This would be a city of Sedona employee, with the cost being split 55% to Sedona and 45% to Cottonwood. This is a two-year agreement that obviously can be reevaluated down the road as we go. And the city of Cottonwood, like we talked about earlier, will be using savings from the CARES Act, budgeted in grants, to help fund this position. Our hope is that this is a win-win. Sharing this position with Sedona both provides a cost savings, and because of how intertwined the Verde Valley is with tourism, jobs, and housing, this ensures projects and programs value-wide. That's all I've got for you, and if you have any questions for me.
Questions for Mr. Bigelow.
I think housing is number one on everybody's mind all over the Verde Valley. My only emphasis would be that this person is an expert.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wildin, Mr. Bigelow is.
The alternative is.
He, we haven't really discussed it specifically, but I don't believe he's applying for that job.
No, no. No, thank you. I know enough to stay out.
Well, it raises an interesting question, though. What, how do we participate in the hiring of this position?
She calls me up, and I have to say yes, no. So, it's 55-45. I believe that we, it's a great opportunity to partner. So, we worked on the job description together that set the requirements and the expectations, the education, the experience level. So, they'll advertise the position, we'll be involved in the selection process, and then, depending on who is hired, he or she, we'll work through the details of how many days there, how many days here, you know, what the priorities are. There is, there are out clauses in this if it doesn't work, but I thought it was worth giving an effort to at least get it started. Not common to share positions among cities, but this just seemed like a good fit. They seem willing to work with us. The 55-45 is just to make it clear, you know, it's hard to have two bosses from two different organizations, which rules apply, which ones don't for personnel matters and all that. So, it so it made a good sense to us. It also, they will also pick up all the training and travel and vehicle allowances and all of those kinds of things. So, it'll be clear, it's a Sedona employee, but I'm not currently the least bit worried about workload, assignment priorities, and those kinds of things. The city manager seems very willing to work, and we both want to make this successful.
Certainly. Like Mr. Bigelow said, our problems are intertwined, and it'll take a joint effort to provide solutions, and we all know we need to do that. So, I think it's a great, a great move.
For the record, Mr. Bigelow, I am one of your biggest fans.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Are we provising housing for this person?
Yeah. That'll be your first task.
That's exact.
Yeah. Yep. All right. Anything else, council?
I just have one question. We have a very clear out if it doesn't work out the way we want it to. Okay.
All right. I'll go ahead and make a motion then to approve Resolution Number 3101.
Second.
All right. Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Wildin seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Corot?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
All right. Please read Resolution Number 3101 by title only.
Resolution Number 3101, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Sedona for joint funding of a Verde Valley housing manager. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I move we pay the claims.
Second.
All right. Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All right. Councilmember Narin made the motion. Corot seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you.